We'll now call the regular meeting of Handwell Council orders for February 21st, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I move to approve the agenda of the following amendments adding 11(c) Handwell Days Committee.
Second or?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded, motion carried. Thank you, council. We need the motion to adopt the minutes for January 17th meeting.
I'll move to adopt the minutes of January 17th, January 17th meeting, a regular meeting of council.
I'll say.
Questions, comments, any errors, omissions anybody's aware of? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, thank you, motion carried. Now, item four, public input, we have some inquiries on, I believe, something on the onsite premises.
Yes.
So, I'll give you the floor, sir. You can either stand up or sit down, wherever, whatever you're most comfortable doing.
I'll sit, thanks. My, several concerns. One, I was totally unaware of what was going on until I found it by accident online, that the motion was going to be third reading tonight. I think you need to get the information out to the community in a better manner somehow. The sign out front could have had a notice on it, a new bylaw was being voted on, or seeking to approve, or what have you. Not everybody's on a computer, not everybody's on Facebook. I suggested paper posters of some kind, somehow, maybe. I don't know postage, of course, would be, I don't know if that would be an issue or not, whether you could print papers, give them to the post office to clear our mailboxes. Nothing in here, not a thing. They mentioned the garbage bylaw. But nothing about this bylaw, onsite premises bylaw. So, as from what I, from what I can gather and the lack of people here, I'd say nobody knows anything about it. So, I think we really need to try and get the information out, somehow. You've got to be creative. Whether you get a hold of everybody's email address and do a blanket email, what have you. Something needs to be done. And the, I tried looking up the existing bylaw to see what the difference was between this and the proposal. And on our website, I couldn't find it. The Handwell website, I had to go to the provincial website. And that leads you down the garden path quite a ways before you find out anything at all. It's quite a read. There are some, I noticed a couple of changes there. Another question was, who's going to be the enforcement officer? Is it a provincial person or a local person? That's going to enforce these bylaws? Because it will, you'll have to create another position if it isn't already created, for someone to administer this regulation. So, it would probably be better if we had somebody local that understands the community. As opposed to somebody from Glass House downtown, who's just coming out here, holy geez, I got a complaint and I got to hit it hard with a hammer. So, there's that concern. Another concern is the, the way the bylaw, bylaws are written, there is no recourse for the owner of any kind. Bylaw officer walks in, says, "You can't do that," writes you whatever form, and that's it. "I'll give you 10 days, I'll give you two months, whatever, to do whatever you have to do to get rid of this, or the justice, or whatever has to be done." And after that, the minimum fine is $1,000 per day until the issue is resolved. And you have no recourse. So, this is something I really have a problem with. I can work with somebody on something, but boys, when you come in my yard and start telling me what I can do and what I can't do, that's another issue altogether. That's not going to fly. Talk to anybody about just about anything, but don't force me into stuff. And the rest of these people here, I think are of the same thinking. So, those are my major concerns about it. There was a change also that, oh geez, I've got it on my phone somewhere. On the provincial side, it said that the act was amended only to cover salvage yards.
What was that?
"The act has been modified to cover only salvage yards." I think it's a mistake. So, there's an issue there of some sort.
Yeah, it's the first time I heard that. That's something I'll definitely check in.
Yeah. I'll do it on my phone here if you want.
Did you have anything else to add?
Probably 50 things, but somebody else can speak.
We'll certainly take your comments under advisement, no question about that. Just for information purposes, Handwell's been under the same Onsite Premises Act since, what, 2015?
Yeah, I wasn't aware that there was one brought in.
It's the same, we've had it since, I think.
November 19th, 2016.
2016. And it refers to the same sections in the act, that the bylaw that's now going under Kings, the area that used to be Kingsley.
Yeah.
Now, it's the same act and it was, only thing different is Handwell would administer it versus the province administered it. Kingsley was under the provincial act since the onsite premises has been rendered. It's the same as Handwell was before we had our own bylaw. And our bylaw just refers to the provincial bylaw. So, the Kingsley area that became part of Handwell was already under the Onsite Premises Act, same act as we have, under the province.
Under the province.
Yeah, but the only thing different is the administration on it. And as far as the enforcement goes, is we contracted to the Regional Service Commission and they have an enforcement officer that will go around. And there's, like I said, they, when they do, again, onsite premises is very subjective. What might be onsitely to me may not be onsitely to you, so it's.
Well, the description in, in the act, for the bylaw is, is, what's that? Pretty vague.
It's very, it's quite vague.
Having vital dashes.
And the only time that it's going to be brought to our attention is if somebody complains. And that'll be somebody from your local area that's going to be complaining. Might be your neighbor, it might be a guy down the street, or whatever. So, that's, we're not out looking, I mean, there's no one here, or the bylaw officer's not out looking for.
But my point is.
Infractions of the bylaw.
If the bylaw officer shows up, I have, I'm, I have no recourse.
But the bylaw officer.
I'll just try to talk to him.
Yeah, but he would work with you on how to clean it up or how to alleviate the problem. And it's, it's a long process, it doesn't, it doesn't happen overnight. And the bylaw officer, I've known circumstances that he's been out to, and they give them all kinds of leeway to either, you know, clean it up, make it onsitely, put it in the backyard, whatever, there's all kinds of ways. And the bylaw officer is more than willing to work with you on that.
Yeah, see, like, if you had some vehicles for parts or what have you in your yard, at the back of your yard, say, and you can see them from the road, it's okay to put a fence around them.
Again, that would be up to the bylaw officer, but he'll work with the person or people, you know, to resolve the problem, there's no doubt of that.
Because most, most business people have some sort of mess in their area. You can't operate a business without a mess.
Yeah, especially, you know.
You know, whether it's a pile of lumber, or palletful nails sitting in the yard, or what have you. Trucks, tires, lawn mowers, you know.
I think it's, you know, again, it has to come from a complaint, and the bylaw officer would investigate it, he may deem it frivolous, which in some cases there, because like I said, some, somebody may be complaining just for the sake of complaining. There may be, it may be a personal thing, it may be a grudge, who knows?
That's right.
But the bylaw officer is, you know, is, is trained in bylaw enforcement, and he'd be the one to make the final call. But I know from, from a fact that he works with people, that there has been complaints about, and where he's deemed it onsite, onsitely. And it has to be quite onsitely before he will figure it's onsitely also. Because again, it's very subjective, right?
Yeah.
But we'll certainly take your comments under advisement and we'll, we'll see where it goes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, your, thank you for your presentation, sir.
I have a question here.
Yep.
What if it's a clear case of no doubt, absolutely onsitely, but nobody does any of it?
Yeah, we've got one, in fact, that's no doubt that it's completely onsitely. I'm not going to point fingers either, but.
But, you know, there should be a lack of any sort of enforcement. It just kind of, oh, don't talk about that now.
Yeah, well, yeah, there is enforcement going on, but there's a process they have to follow. They have to be served, usually have to contact them. So, the, if it's someone untaken of, very difficult to contact the person because nobody, nobody knows where they are. So, that, that makes it difficult.
It's more than onsitely, the situation I'm talking about, it's definitely dangerous and unsafe.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's been a hazard for years, and it's still a hazard. It's, it's changed, but it's, it's gotten, it's gotten worse looking than it has gotten better looking. But it's still a mess. So, that's, that's one that's on the books because we've had complaints about it, and it's being worked on, but it's, the difficulty is finding the owner. And I don't know if that's the same property you're talking about or not, but it may well be.
It's been being worked on for about 15 years.
Probably the same one, yeah. But that's where the province looked after for their first 10 years, and we've been looking after for the last five.
I mean, it's ridiculous that it's gone on this long.
Yeah, well, you don't have to tell me.
So, we can't do anything until this is approved.
Well, the province could, though, yeah. So, it was under the province, now, once this is approved, then the administration of it goes over to Handwell. So, again, we can look at it. But before, it was had to go through the province to have a look at it. But I know they've been working on it and they haven't been having a whole lot of luck trying to find the owner. I don't know if we'll have any better luck or not.
Can that not be deemed dangerous? In which case, they could act immediately.
Yeah, that's a, that's a possibility.
It says in the act.
I mean, somebody, obviously, if a kid got involved in there and got injured or killed, or, let's say, somebody's going to be on the hook for it.
Definitely, yeah.
And if they're not taking any action because of, just can't get a hold of the owners, then they're obviously off the hook. So, somebody's going to end up there in a way.
But they wouldn't be off the hook because eventually, somebody would find them sooner or later. Anyway, it's going to, once this bylaw is passed, then it becomes Handwell's administrative problem.
Get a hold of CRA, they'll find her.
They'd find anybody.
Turn them over to, turn them over to a class agency. But anyway, like I said, once it becomes a bylaw for Handwell, then we have the authority to look into it. And where it's dangerous, then we can act on it, send the bill to the owner. But they can actually take the bill onto the property taxes also. So, it becomes a lien against the property for taxation.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, so that's a, that's another thing that we can do.
This is the thing that kind of worried me because there's a lot of power that, in that act, or in that bylaw, that could be abused if you had the wrong person enforcing it.
Yeah, but we're at Handwell's too, I mean, the, the bylaw officer would give us a, a report, and, you know, we've got, our staff and whatnot, but would have to agree with it, right? So, there should be enough safety mechanisms into the situation so that it wouldn't be like somebody just running rampant over the situation.
Are you allowed to modify the, the bylaw? Or do you have to accept it as is from the province?
The bylaws, it is written, and that's, that's the bylaw unless we change it. But we've had the same bylaw through here at Handwell for, like I said, since 2016. So, we haven't changed it, we haven't had an issue with it, so.
That's why, that's why I'm worried about you having too much tooth in the teeth.
Yeah, you know, again, you've got to be careful with, you know, with regulations, right? They're, they're meant for everybody's benefit, not to, you know, go against one person, one individual. Okay, any other questions?
Good evening, council. I'm just going to pause for a minute there in case someone wants to leave the room while I'm addressing council. The reason I'm here tonight is to ask the mayor to clarify his comments he made on social media with regards to Handwell Rural Community Garbage Collection Service. About a week ago, you posted a Q and A document. One of the questions piqued my curiosity. Was council aware that BMI didn't have lifts? Why ask that question, I don't know. The answer, in the past, we had confirmed that not all Faro trucks had mechanical arm, uh, lift arms, and there was no guarantee that the truck would be equipped with one. So, yesterday I checked again, and I noticed yesterday that the garbage collection, that same document's been changed. Been replaced by a new one, a redacted version. And the question and answer I just stated is no longer there. I went, I was just wondering why it was removed?
Do you want me to answer?
That's a good question for the mayor.
Yeah, but the mayor, again, is not right up, obviously, there's been a change. I didn't make the change.
It was your name on the bottom of the sheet, that's why I thought maybe it was your change.
Possibly, but there was, if there was a change, then I'm going to pass it over to the CAO because I'm aware of a change, but at the time we wrote that, there was a BMI, or the Faro did not have, couldn't guarantee an arm, but since they have guaranteed an arm. But at the, at the time that we thought, when we, when that document was written, it was based on old information. So, now we have new information, that's why it was changed. But I'm going to turn it over to the CAO where she made the change, and that's, that's what's known to me, so I don't think, I'm too far ahead on that one.
No, so, we used a question and answer from two or three years ago when BMI first took on the garbage contract in Handwell. So, I used the same answers. Then I was speaking to Faro, and he said that all the trucks now have the lifts. So, I said, oh, I said, well, I will take that down, so I removed that part of it.
So, basically.
Back when we did it, when we did it originally.
So, basically, the Q and A was based on outdated information?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
For that question, by the way.
I was, because I was even, why, why even make the comment that not all Faro trucks had mechanical lifts, arms, when it's not a requirement in the tender?
Correct.
Okay, so, in, in other words, you could have also stated in the past, we had confirmed that not all Faro trucks were red, and Faro couldn't guarantee that they could supply a red truck. It would have been about the same.
Probably, but people weren't asking about red truck, people were asking about the mechanical arm.
Okay, so people were asking about the mechanical arms, okay. All right. Every day, you hear government stating, "We have to reduce pollution and reduce our single plastic usage." When you go to the grocery store, they use paper bags instead of plastic. Even Sholton's is doing their part. They have replaced their plastic lids for their coffee cups with a non-plastic version. The worst part is that I have to put those paper bags and non-plastic coffee cup lids in a plastic bag so they can be brought to the landfill instead of just loose in my garbage can dolly. Same scenario applies for a lot of other items, Styrofoam packing peanuts, et cetera. It's been approved, it has been proven that the use of mechanical lift arms in the collection of garbage does reduce the amount of single-use plastic garbage bags going into the landfill. I can personally attest that I've been using twice as much, if not more, plastic bags since BMI has been providing garbage collection compared to the previous company using the mechanical arms. One would think that a community with a motto inspired by nature would be at the forefront in trying to reduce pollution, or is this motto just a good catchphrase? I was going to contact the NB Green Party candidate for Handwell in Maryland to see if elect, if elected, the Green Party candidate would work on putting procedures, rules, recommendations in place to limit the needless amount of plastic garbage bags going in the landfill. To my surprise, the NB Green Party candidate for Handwell, Maryland is none other than our very own deputy mayor, Susan Jones, I did not know that. One would have to expect the Green Party candidate would be all for reducing pollution. Did council discuss and decide what council wanted as far as requirements for the garbage tender? Or was it left to the discretion of someone else to write up the tender? You guys, like me, this is what we want as far as the tender? Or somebody else just, this is what we always wrote?
No, we, we did discuss that at council.
Prior to submitting the tender?
Exactly.
Okay. When was that?
Couple of meetings ago, before, before we put the tender out, anyway.
Okay, at an end of meeting, or?
No, council meeting.
At a council meeting?
No, I'm sorry.
I, I don't recall seeing any of the council meetings with that.
It might have been a management meeting.
It had been at what?
It might have been a management meeting, I don't recall.
Oh, management meeting, oh, which isn't to the public?
Yes, it is.
They're recorded.
And it's recorded.
Which one was it?
I'm not sure exactly what 20 was, you put the tender.
It was before the tender.
Don't ask me before the tender, you can't discuss it after you've made it.
Well, no, why?
And we also, I used the tender documents that had come from the province that was part of their contract for the Kingsley RSD. And we had put in, like, an arm would be an asset.
Continuing on, there are some from Handwell Rural Community that would try to make you believe that it is Fredericton Regional Solid Waste that requires Handwell Rural Community to ensure that all garbage be in plastic bags. Fredericton Solid Waste was contacted, and that is not the case. As a matter of fact, the use of plastic bags in a landfill is a concern of a lot of people. There are some also from Handwell Rural Community that would try to make you believe that garbage should be in plastic bags and not loose to avoid items flying out of the trailer or truck as it goes down the road. I would refer you to the New Brunswick Motor Vehicle Act, section 256.1, which states that it is an offense for a driver of a motor vehicle not to properly secure their load in order to prevent any part of the load from escaping. On several occasions, I have witnessed paper and other items flying out of BMI trailer as it goes down the road because a proper tarp was not installed to prevent this from happening. Also, a few large garbage bags have been seen along Route 640 on garbage collection days. According to witnesses, they seen these come out of BMI trailer. I did not personally witness that. There are some from Handwell Rural Community that are concerned that not every resident can afford a dolly garbage can to be used with lift arms. I respect that concern, but the cost to purchase extra plastic bags without using lift arms soon makes up the cost of the dolly garbage can. Handwell Rural Community could even purchase these dolly cans, garbage cans, in bulk and sell them to residents to offset the cost. This could be an excellent, let's do our part to reduce single-use plastic in our landfill. Furthermore, requirement of mechanical arms in the tender would not stop the garbage disposal company from picking up garbage manually as it was done before BMI took over when the residents didn't have a dolly garbage can to use with mechanical arms. So, buying a garbage dolly can can then, at that point, become a new issue. There are some from Handwell that would also say that they are trying to keep the cost down by not going with mechanical arms as a prerequisite. Let's just say, for instance, the difference in cost between using lift arms and not was $90,000. Divide that by 28, 150 houses, more or less, that would increase the yearly tax, property tax, by a mere $31 a house. Not, now, the big question is, $31 more a year in property taxes too much of an amount to pay to reduce Handwell Rural Community's needless pollution with extra single-use garbage bags in the landfill? Why hasn't Handwell Rural Community done some sort of town hall meeting to find out what the residents want with regards to garbage collection? It's been a controversy for the last couple of years since BMI took over. Council is elected to represent, the residents not dictate to the resident. This is what council has decided, this is what we're doing. On the subject of costs, now, let's compare the added cost to garbage collection against the Handwell Rural Community salaries. I've recently been made aware that Handwell Rural, Rural Community CAO, annual salary is close, or maybe even more, than that of the CEO of the city of Monkow. This is the largest city in the province of New Brunswick. I understand that the Handwell, the CEO's position was only created in October of 2023 with the amalgamation, but for a small rural community such as Handwell to pay one person an annual salary between $84,000 and $99,000 a year sounds a bit much. As we all know, the CEO was awarded the position without any job advertisement or competition because it was a political appointment. Possibly, when the CEO retires, which according to her will be before the next municipal election, Handwell Rural Community may be in a position to look at the CEO's annual salary to be more fitting of a rural community the size of Handwell. Any questions, Mr. Mayor?
None, nope. Any other comments? Well, thank everybody for the comments.
I, I have seen the garbage company hauling bags of garbage in the back of the truck because the trailer's already full with no tarp, or net. The garbage trailer should have a proper net over top of it when the door's closed, but when they move from one driveway to another, they don't close the door because they're just idling along the edge of the road and jump out, grab the bag, throw it in. Hopefully, it goes in far enough and doesn't roll back out. So, no system is perfect. If you want to eliminate plastic bags and handle loose garbage, you will need a packer truck, and you will need an arm. Because God knows what people put in their garbage cans, some of them weigh 10 pounds, some of them weigh 100 pounds. So, for that reason, you would need some, an arm, mechanical arm to lift it in. But you would have to put it into a packer so that it couldn't blow up because it's loose garbage, you could have paper, you could have God knows what. But it has to be in a solid, contained area for it to work. Just my two cents worth.
All right, anybody else? Okay, good, moving on. Item five, disclosures. We, we do have some conflicts tonight for, for closed session, I believe, right? So, we're, we're good for the regular council meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, and reports from the fire department?
Do we have to declare it?
We declare it now? Okay, so if anybody's going to declare for the closed session, they should declare it now.
Do I just read it?
No, you can just say.
Oh, I declare a conflict of interest with item, item 19d on the closed session.
Same as, as often.
Okay, any other conflicts of interest? Okay, thank you. So, we'll look after that when we move into closed session. Okay, item six, fire department. Chief Graves, you're up.
Yes, good evening. Mayor, council, and the public. Everyone got the other two copies of, for December?
Oh, no.
You got them.
I do have, yeah.
Actually, moving along, this is for January, and we had 14 calls. So, any questions, everyone get a chance to look at it?
They took over January, most of the MBAs?
Yeah, most months, actually, actually, it was down. And a lot of that is lack of snow, not in the wrong black people.
That's a good thing, don't say it today.
Yeah, or freezing rain, that, that usually ups the, the calls. We get two people are halfway through their fire fair one program. We've done, they had a cottage with that, we got to do live fire training on the weekend, and got some sign-offs for those people doing the level one along. Of course, everyone gets their hands in it when you're doing it, but they weren't well, and.
Okay, any other questions for the chief?
No.
Thank you, chief, for your information, timely as usual. Can I get a motion to receive the fire department report?
Motion to receive fire department report?
Second. Any questions, any more question, comments? Thanks, chief.
Thanks, chief.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried, thank you, council. Moving on to item seven, we have a presentation from Mr. Nathanson, I believe. Is he with us tonight? No? I thought, I thought the gentleman in the back went. I don't know the gentleman myself, I know he was. I know he was supposed to be here for a presentation, so I'm not sure on that one. We might have put him off to the next council meeting.
We have to use him here by now without the service. The OSF.
Yeah, he should be here by now, for sure. Yeah. Okay, moving on to item eight, we've had a... Oh, you folks are more than welcome to stay. We're not going to twist your arm to stay. You can stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like, or you can leave. It's entirely up to you guys. We certainly welcome your participation. Okay. As far, moving on to item eight, building permits. We've had two permits received in the last little bit, one in Upper Kings Clear and one in Taylor Drive in Hanwell. Things should start picking up, I think, as the winter progresses. Item nine, there's no proclamation for tonight, and item ten, there's no petitions or delegations. And item eleven A is the business arising from the bylaw, a bylaw respecting danger to your own psychic premises.
If you guys want to take in their considerations and find out a little bit more information, then we could put it off until next month, if you wish.
We can move it to the next month if everybody's happy with that, and we'll see if we get more information out to the residents so they can be aware of what's going on.
I was going to add, also, even if you put a message on the sign, post the information on the bulletin board or just so people can come in and read it and see what it's all about.
Yeah, we can do that, and we can get some, maybe some copies of it out to some of the residences, like Sholten's and the restaurants and whatnot around, so people be well aware.
Hopefully, simple, it doesn't cost a lot of money, just what people need to know what's going on.
Yeah, okay. We can certainly do that. So we're going to move the item eleven on the bylaw thirty-two, twenty-twenty-four, to our next council meeting. If that's all right with council? That's what you guys want to do?
Could I just have a motion to table it?
We don't really need to, because there's no motion right now to, on the floor, right? We can just move it to next month.
Yeah, we'll just take it off this week's, or this month's agenda, and we'll add it on to February's. If everybody's happy with that, we can do that. March.
Not in February.
So, item B, C is the King Woodswood tax levy. That's the surtax on their, what they pay for the tourism levy that goes on to the hotel.
So, council last month, I believe Doug Johnson came to attend your meeting, and they did some repairs to the sign for the Radisson that is out on the highway, and he has provided us with the invoice. So if you would like to use some of the funds that we collect for the tax levy, then those funds could be used towards this.
I personally would like further discussion. We'll need a motion.
Do you have a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
We don't have a motion on the floor yet. But just as information, this is a surtax that people pay. It's a three percent addition to the room rates. Anybody that occupies a room at the resort over here, they pay an additional three percent that goes into tourism levy, or it's a tourism levy that goes into advanced tourism in the Hanwell area.
So the province keeps that back to the Hanwell?
No, it comes directly from the owner of the hotel.
I move to suspend the rules so we can have discussion prior to making a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor suspending the rules, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Okay, we'll now have the rules suspended, so we can discuss this further. I'll start with comments. I'll start with Counselor Holt.
I would just like to know a little bit more as far as the dollar figures, okay? In the essence, how much we've collected, how much they are collecting, in just not cartworn, handing money over, okay? We had some earlier discussion prior to meeting about all this, all the funds, et cetera, where we can allocate the funds, et cetera. I would feel more comfortable doing a little bit more pertaining to where we can put those funds.
Okay. Do you want me to speak?
Okay. Counselor Fox?
Yeah, I would, too. I mean, I echo Counselor Holt's comments, and I feel as though I would like to know a little bit more about this as well. My concern is that this seems to be routine business maintenance as opposed to tourists putting money in towards tourism, and I don't think we should be subsidizing regular business maintenance. Business puts a sign up, they should maintain their sign, and I don't see how it's tourism. Certainly, it allows people to know that there's a hotel by the highway, but, I mean, that's part of their business, that's part of their sign. To me, that's part of what they should be doing. It's not tourism in terms of allowing people to know what exists in the community, what tourist activities can be done in the community. So until I have a better grasp on that, I would certainly not support this.
Okay. Counselor Heisler?
I have to agree with both Counselor Holt and Counselor Fox. My understanding, I had mistakenly, was that there was a minimum that they could use towards tourism, but I've been told since that that's not necessarily the case. So I want, I need some clarification on exactly what, or if there's a minimum that we need to give them in order to promote tourism. So I'd like more on that.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I have no questions at all.
Counselor Brinkley?
I tend to agree with the counselors that have already spoke, but it would be interesting to hear what's sitting in that account now, similar to what Counselor Holt is, and just what those are used for, and just expand on that.
Okay. Counselor Cruz?
I'd agree with Counselor Fox and Holt as well.
Great. Thank you. Counselor McKenzie?
Pretty much agree with what's going around the table. A couple additional questions on that because I have a memory of goldfish on it. Was discussed that this was due to, like, damage from something, or was it just like a routine maintenance? Because if it was damaged, wouldn't it be like an insurance claim from like a storm or something like that that would be covered? And if it was routine maintenance, then I'm not sure that that's the purpose that tourism levies are normally supposed to be used for. I agree with the counselors.
Okay. Counselor DeKl?
Yeah, I understand, you know, where the owner was coming from, asking for the money. I get that the sign is helpful. I see the letter he wrote saying, you know, this is why the sign is important. However, I tend to agree with everybody else. I, we have a lot of businesses in the community. Now, this may be the only one contributing to this kind of levy, I understand that, but I just don't want to set the wrong precedent, I guess, that, you know, we're helping with routine maintenance as opposed to other things. I think we could maybe redirect the money to other places with this, perhaps the same business. I'm not saying we don't support them at all, I'm just saying, like, maybe there's other things that we do.
Okay, so if it's council's desire, we'll move this off, we'll find out more information, and we'll put it off until the next council meeting.
Or I can answer. I have figures I can answer.
Yeah, there's a lot of other questions they asked besides just figures. So we'll have to look into it, I think, a little further, and we'll put it off to the next meeting. Is that council's desire?
Sure.
Fair enough. Okay, for the Hanwell Days Committee, we'll now strike the Hanwell Days Committee. Thanks for coming, guys. Appreciate it.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
So we're going to strike a Hanwell Days Committee. I volunteered to chair it, and I believe all of council is going to sit on it, as far as I am aware.
Send your seat.
So we'll make that an ad hoc committee. And again, we can, you know, if there's projects that desire or need some volunteers with the community, the people that are looking after that part of the project can reach out to the community for volunteers.
I move to strike the Hanwell Days Committee and have Mayor Dave Morrison as chair and the rest of council as members of the committee.
Secondary?
Secondary.
Yeah. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, council. Correspondents. Let's just, we'll have to clarify some things, like, if you don't have a presentation, if you had a presentation, that's great, we'll listen to it, but as far as the ongoings on council, we don't solicit comments from the audience or anything at the time. So it's not being mean or anything, that's just the way it goes. Okay? Correspondents, did we have any?
No.
So there's no correspondents. Meetings and special events, we had the mayor's report, I believe everybody's received that. Can I get a motion to receive the report as presented?
I move to receive the mayor's report as presented.
Secondary?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you. Committee reports, we have emergency measures committee report.
So, council, you provided my emergency measures committee report. We had a very good meeting. It was mostly to recap the winter weather event when we had to open all of our shelters and stuff. So we just talked about what worked, what didn't work, and what might be needed. There were a couple items that we probably should discuss in the future, which I'll bring forward at a later time, such as possible extra generators, the heaters that the fire department can take around to homes and stuff like that. And we did up committee's future tasks of things that the committee can possibly do. So this report, as always, is on our website for anybody, and if there's any members of our public in this evening, we would love for any volunteers to join our emergency committee. So we meet once a month, it's the fourth Wednesday of every month. So our next meeting is on the twenty-eighth, just in case you'd like to attend.
Okay. Motion to receive the KMO committee's report?
I move to receive the committee report of January twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four.
Secondary?
I'll second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you, council. So we've got item fifteen?
No.
Nope, one we missed.
This was added last, yeah, late, so the rural plan review we have to add.
Yes, okay, so we have the rural plan review committee has that meeting, if there's a report out there?
Yeah, everybody has it. Right here, short and sweet. You should have to. I should have just started from there.
Okay, can I get a motion to receive the rural plan committee report?
I move to receive the rural plan committee.
Secondary?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you, council. Now, moving on to item fifteen, the CAO Treasures Report.
Okay, so once again, you have my CAO report. The biggest item on my CAO report is that we are having a municipal by-election again, and it will be held on Monday, May the sixth. So due to publication deadlines, the election in New Brunswick must have certified copy. The council resolution declaring a vacancy no later than Friday, March the twenty-second, so if any of you plan on stepping down, I would need this for our next council meeting in March. For my Treasures Report, I will be doing a letter for the public and putting it on our website and social media as a breakdown of our budget compared from this year to last year. I've been doing it for a couple of years, so I will get that one out here soon. On social media, there was some comments made when they were talking about the budgets, and a lot of people were recommending this property tax deferral program for seniors. Just so people are aware, there is this deferred program. It's subject to a current annual interest rate of four-point-two-three percent, and if your family income is over a hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-one-seventy-eight, the interest is nine-point-two-three percent. So this isn't something that your taxes just get deferred, you're actually paying interest on it. So the deferred property tax and the interest amounts constitute as a lien against your property and become due and payable to the province when the property is either sold or transferred. So I was a little concerned when I saw those posts. It kind of made it sound like it was this great thing for seniors, but if you know of anybody that is thinking about it, I would strongly recommend that they research it because it's not just all sugar and spice, I guess.
It just defers the tax, and they are collected at the property sales.
Yes. So we have been receiving a lot of rights to information and protection of privacy requests, and then complaints have been going into the Ombudsman. This has, back, I'm going to say probably ten, fifteen years ago, we used to be able to charge when we did these requests. However, that charge, municipalities are no longer allowed to charge applicants for them. But it's been recommended that, due to the number of them, that we really should be tracking the cost. So in January, we worked on three complaints to the Ombudsman, and then we also received three Rtipper requests. Some of this will also fall into the month of February. We always have thirty business days to complete these. So in January, the cost was forty-eight hours total between staff, which is usually pretty well the clerk and I and one other person. This doesn't include any of council's time, so the cost was one-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and eighty-one cents just for the month of January. February is going to be extensive. We have done a lot of time in the month of February, so... That was that one. I just provided with you when I gave you the electronic copy of this, I didn't provide you with your invoices. These were larger budgeted expenses for the fire station. I don't need approval on them because they were a budgeted amount, but I wanted you to be able to see them, so I have added them to your package. So the first one was LED lights and chargers, chargers, sorry, so they were sixty-three-hundred dollars, and then a thermal imager and hoses, and that was thirteen-thousand-twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents. So as per the, our bylaw, our purchasing policy, only non-budgeted payments over five-thousand dollars request, or require council's approval. So the only one that we had, there's an invoice here for the Morning Pride turnout gear, which is your jacket and pants. This is the fire department's bunker gear. We were hoping that we were going to be able to buy these last year, that they would, the invoice would be here before the end of December. So we transferred those funds over to our capital reserves. So tonight, I just need you to make a motion to transfer those funds back from our capital reserves to general capital so that I can pay this. So the HST is not permitted to be paid out of capital reserves, so we will just make a contribution of only the thirty thousand, and then we'll pay the balance out of this year. Okay? So I have given you the motion on that because it has to be specific wording.
Be it resolved that the council for the rural community of Hanwell contribute from the general capital reserve fund to the general capital fund thirty thousand dollars for the purchase of seven Morning Pride turnout gear jacket and square pants.
Secondary?
I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the CAO Treasures Report as presented? Can I get a motion to accept the CAO Treasures Report as presented?
A motion to accept the CAO Treasures Report presented.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you.
Just have one more thing, sorry. I have one more there that I forgot.
Oh, okay. Just a quick addition to the Treasures Report.
Yeah, sorry, council. It's, I did up, we've had a couple of residents ask about how our solar panels are providing for power. So I have provided you a report. You have the summary. So I would like to read this so that it is out there publicly because there has been great controversy about our solar projects. So the solar panels were installed on the roof of the municipal building in the fall of twenty-twenty-two. However, the new, the New Brunswick, sorry, I've got a friend over there. The N V power meter was not activated and red until November the seventh of twenty-twenty-two. As you can see in the attached net metering summary, the consumption that was supplied by the solar panels in twenty-twenty-two was only two hundred and forty kilowatts an hour because that was only like the two months. During the winter months of January to April of twenty-twenty-three, snow covered the panels. Therefore, the consumption that was supplied was zero. The beginning of summer was extremely wet and overcast. So kilowatt hours supplied in May was about a fourth of the cost of our monthly bill. But as the summer progressed, it was more like half or all of our bill. For example, the month of August, our consumption used was two thousand, six hundred and forty kilowatts and the solar panels supplied two thousand, four hundred. The fall of twenty-twenty-three was about the same. It offset about half until we reached November. And to our latest summary report reading on February the sixth of twenty-twenty-four, in which it's once again covered in snow. So the pros, the system is working based on the totals during the summer if we had good weather. I mean, last summer, the weather was not great. Cons, the panels should be elevated slightly so that the snow falls off them easier. However, any additional brackets would need to be inspected by our roofing engineer to ensure the extra weight. And I have no idea what the cost would be. If that is something that you would like for me to investigate, I certainly can and we can talk about that at maybe another meeting. The cons, the consumption usage in our community hall is much higher than when we did the projections for the panels a couple of years ago due to the increase in rentals. So this would have an impact of the overall projection costs and savings. So a summary between November of twenty-twenty-two to February twenty-twenty-four, we have consumed one hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty kilowatts. And solar panels offset only twelve thousand, two hundred and forty. So hopefully in twenty-twenty-four, we'll have a better understanding of the cost benefits for the solar project, so. I just wanted to provide you with an update on that.
Thanks, Rachel. It's great to know.
Yes, certainly.
That consumption is way higher than we projected originally, though. It's like you would think, isn't the geothermal on that side? Or we put?
So the geothermal is on this side. But we were not, like, a couple of years ago when we did those projections, we never dreamt that our community hall would be rented out as much as it is. Like, we are booked a lot, so like our air conditioning and our heat goes a fair amount. So it's just one of those, one of those things between consumption and the weather. But like I said, hopefully this summer will maybe have a better, we certainly had a better winter. I wish that we had some way of raking off or brushing off the snow, but it's a little too dangerous on a metal roof to have staff going up there to wipe them off too, so.
The heating on that side, is it, is it electric?
Yeah, it's electric.
That's what's causing the problem. I wonder if it might be a future project, a better to have a, look into getting the more, more efficient heating system to replace that on that side of the, of the, of the saw, of the building. Because that's where the consumption's coming from.
Yeah, that's a very huge room to heat electrically.
Wow.
We'd be much better off with a, with a heat pump system, like air to air to air.
Like a fifteen ton, anyway, it's something.
It's something we can.
It was supposed to all be geothermal. Yeah, but we had, we had planned for it and I still don't understand what went wrong there, but.
I would really like to have the whole heating system in here. We freeze most of the time. We use space heaters most of the time in the summertime in here, kind of thing. So I'd like to have a whole heating system looked at. That's another discussion.
Good. So we'll move on to item sixteen, older unfinished business. Is there anything on the rec building or the rural plan progress report? I think we've already had a rural plan committee report.
So the recreation building, we are going to discuss that in the infrastructure and parks meeting.
So item seventeen, new business, Yoho Park. Anything to report there?
So the only thing that we have in that, the transfer from the Scouts Canada is supposed to be completed by the lawyers for the end of February. And then we can start planning on hopefully clearing that property and getting a future park down there. So that will also be something that we can discuss at the infrastructure and parks meeting if we have that in place, if it's transferred by then.
We certainly can, can do our planning because we, it's been coming for months and years. But surely it's getting close.
Okay, so item eighteen is the upcoming activities, which is Zoomers Mondays at two and Thursdays at twelve. So that being so, we'll move into closed session, that item nineteen. And just to refer you folks, the items, closed session matters are not open to the public because they're of a financial nature, or personal nature, or HR nature, or something along that line. So at this point in time, we will close, close the doors to the public and we'll move into closed session. I'll escort you guys out in the meantime and we'll come back and get a motion in the closed session. All right, can I have a motion to move into closed session, please?
I move to go into closed session.
Secondary.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Great, motion carried. We are now in closed session. Okay, need a motion to go into closed session?
I move to come out of closed session and move back into open session.
I'll second it.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you.
Can I make this motion?
Yes.
I move to accept the quote from Greenfoot Energy Solutions in the amount of twenty-six thousand, two hundred plus HST for four twenty-four thousand BTU Dyken heat pumps for Station One.
I'll second it.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you. So we need a motion to go back into closed session?
Do you want to, do you want to extend the time first because?
Yes.
Probably should. Yeah, a motion to extend the meeting past nine PM if needed.
Secondary. Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, right now, Counselors DeKliva, Krebs, and our clerk, Sheri Johnson, have left the council chambers due to a conflict of interest. So now we need a motion to go into closed session?
I move to go into closed session.
Secondary.
I'll second it.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. We are now in closed session.
Motion to come out of closed session and go into open session.
I'll second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you. Now we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Secondary. Meeting adjourned at nine twenty PM.